Ladies and gentlemen, I'm calling the November 12th meeting of the Single Planning Commission to work. If you would please join me in legislations. Plays and pleas.
To the right, for the United States of America, and to a development of which is standing, one nation, the underdog, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Clary, we have a director's report this evening.
Yes, yes, thank you. This is just a reminder to speak into your microphones, and also if you have any questions about the tabs or any other questions, I'd be happy to address those. Thank you.
Anything, Ms. Clary? For Ms. Clary right now. Okay. Looking at your agenda, we have a variety of upcoming meetings and activities. Monday, November 18th, Town Council Committee meetings. Tuesday, November 19th, Port Historic and Architectural Review Meeting. The 19th meeting of Port Zoning Appeals has been canceled. Our next Town Council meeting is December the 3rd, and we, this body will meet again here same bat time on the 10th, so we hope you will join us for all those opportunities. Item number three is public comments. You're invited to speak on any matters except those scheduled public hearings, and we have a sign up sheet, reminder you're limited to five minutes per person. Any required responses from the town will be provided in writing following the meeting. Do we have anyone signed up? No one's signed up. Anybody have a change of heart and decide you want to talk about something that's not on a public hearing item tonight? Anybody? Yes, sir. Come up to the podium and state your name if you would.
This is as general of concerns I have.
Can you come to the podium, please, so we can hear you? Thank you.
George Covington, 230 Villa Drive, Smithfield.
Can you repeat that? Because.
230 Villa Drive, George F. Covington.
Thank you, Mr. Covington.
I do want to speak on the cottages, but I, just in general, I had something I want to say that concerned me. The Planning Commission and my overall concern was with the residence growth in the town of Smithfield. And the his, it seemed to me the historical character of the town is slipping away. Maintenance, the infrastructure and upgrades to the infrastructure is at the expense of the resident with the growth in the town residential, and the assessment is going to be burdened by the residents. School capacity and upgrade with the new rooftops, say six to seven thousand homes coming in, there's got to be an upgrade, more capacity for the school. And that, again, is assessment that's going to rest with the residents. The current traffic and the new traffic pattern is a concern to me. Safety and the emergency service that is needed here in the town. So my thing is, I would suggest if you have not done a independent comprehensive analysis or study of the town of Smithfield, current and future forecast, I would recommend that the Planning Commission with their own criteria and concern do an independent comprehensive study and include all the development analyses that have been presented over the years here to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. Anyone else who didn't have a chance to sign up want to speak at this time? Last call. Okay, moving on. Item number four, Planning Commission comments. Anybody have any?
I have one.
Yes, sir. Ms. Brown.
Yes. My comment's unusual, I think, but recently, say the past year or so, I go to the town's website to look for information, and I've noticed, and it seems to accelerate in the past six months, every other time I go there, the format and layout of the website has changed, and it's getting more and more difficult for me to find what I'm searching for. I don't know what's going on with that. I know the internet evolves constantly, but why does the town website evolve constantly? Just an example, I go there, I'll look for the agenda. I know we get it in email, but I look, I go to the town site to look for it as well, and to look for past agendas, you know, when researching for whatever comes before us. I used to find that agenda within one or two clicks. It's now taken me about eight or 10 to find it. It keeps changing, and whoever's in charge of the IT department, I hope they take that into consideration in the future. Okay, thank you.
Stephanie, have any insight on changes to the website or what's coming down?
We had just switched months ago to Civic Plus, who's monitoring our website, which changed the location of it. Now you do go through the homepage, which is the agendas, agendas and minutes, then you would go to Planning Commission, and then that's where they are all listed, and we also have the agenda, and then once the minutes are approved, we have those that accompany it as well.
Yes, and I see what it wants you, visitors, to sign up for an account, open an account. I don't know what that, the benefit of that is, but the town website should be open to the public, and you shouldn't have to sign up for anything, you know, and it should be easy, not just for me, but it should be for many citizens who's looking for information on our website.
I'll certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Other Planning Commission comments. Okay, moving right along. Item number five, Planning Commission waiver for a sign 107 Institute Street, Michelle Jones, applicant. Ms. Clary, you have a staff report on this, of course?
Yes, thank you. The applicants are seeking a Planning Commission waiver in accordance with our new Article 10 for a, to reface two 30-inch by 24-inch tall, five-square-feet signs. They are on an existing non-conforming sign post at the property's front right corner. We do recommend that approval is contingent on the applicant obtaining approval from the V H A R, along with a sign permit and paying the requisite fee. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak on this application? If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michelle Jones. My address is 31 Gerwin Drive, Smithville, Virginia. I'm the executive director of CASA in that building, and the sign that we're going, the post we're going to attach to, I think's been there 25, 30 years, and it's just going to be a simple sign that hangs over, would be, CASA would be the first one, and second is the Riverbend Store. Applicant are two Michelle Joneses, it just happens to be. Other than that, that's it. Who's going to do it is graphic trends, and you can see the design and what we submitted.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
One.
Sir.
Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones, correct?
Yes, sir.
I didn't get a chance. I wanted to, but I didn't get a chance. You can tell me. Are signs currently on that, on that poll, sign poll?
No, I was getting ready to say, no, Your Honor, because I work in the courts all the time.
Wow. You got a promotion, Charles. Very nice.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. No, they're just a bracket. It's the six by six, and then the old bracket. Mark Hall owns the property, and he would prefer not to paint it, the post, because he says it's historical and wants to leave it the way it is. More than happy to paint it. I mean, it's a brand-new building there, so, but whatever y'all choose to do, or accept or not accept.
All right, thank you.
Very welcome.
Any other questions for this applicant?
Oh, sorry. No more questions? You didn't ask what we did, what we do.
I think most of us are familiar with CASA.
Yeah. Oh, sorry?
I think most of us are familiar with CASA.
Oh, that's wonderful. Very good news.
But if you'd like time for a shameless plug, feel free to.
Oh, no, don't want to waste, no. We've got a lot of group of people that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Is that really me? It's okay, lady?
Not yet, they haven't voted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with the not painting it for historical purposes, but.
No, I, I think that post needs to be painted.
That's a V H A R issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get to that next week. Yeah.
We just happen to have a member here.
What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
I'd make a motion to make a recommendation to, is it a recommendation to Town Council approval that?
It is a Planning Commission waiver approval.
Waiver approval to get it to V H A R and approve it as, after they paid the signs and all the stipulations by the town to approve it as.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Good luck. We're thrilled to have your business in town. Next item, it's a public hearing item, the entrance corridor guidelines update. Ms. Clary, you have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. We have a couple of comments that staff has composed. It would be on the second PDF, just to make sure that Planning Commission is in agreement, and we'd just like to highlight a couple of things. First item is just an overall justifying the text, especially with the text wraparound with the pictures, making sure that it flows all on one line. And then also with this first picture for the introduction, they had chosen the Harvest Fellowship Church. We had suggested maybe a more broader picture of Ben's Church kind of featuring the, featuring a more encompassing context of the entrance corridor as opposed to just one building. Also, we just wanted to highlight that public safe, there was a public safety section that was removed on page 21 of the PDF, which doesn't follow with the flow chart, and so just a clarifying comment as to that. We did want Planning Commission to chime in on the inclusion of vinyl on page 26. It's at the bottom of the image. It does read that brick masonry vinyl and cement siding are the preferred siding materials. I didn't know if we wanted to include vinyl or just at this point in time exclude it for a case-by-case basis.
My preference would be to do vinyl on a case-by-case basis. Hardly plain, of course, is preferred or brick, but there will maybe cases that vinyl do.
So we will remove it as a preferred, and then we will not include it as an inappropriate, we'll just, just remove it from that statement, and that way we can have that. Page 31, there's a lot of great photos and captions, and we wanted to kind of break up the words that came before that, if maybe we could move some of the photos to the previous pages to try to break up what the words are so that we don't have a couple of pages with all the photos. And then on page 46, when we're discussing landscaping, page 46 of the, just a single PDF, we mentioned urban landscapes and dynamic urban areas, and I don't, we don't feel as though urban is the correct term that we want to use in that section. And then the last item was on page 74, where we break out the, the, yeah, right here, instead of separating them from where we discussed each section previously, maybe bring it into each section. Do you want to come up and?
Hello, Commissioners. Meredith Johnson of Johnson Planning and Preservation. So I'm shaking my head. We can try it again, now that we've done a lot more shifting in the, one of the earlier drafts, we had them integrated with the section, but it didn't quite fit. They kept dropping off the page, and we would have an odd one hanging out, so I'll work, I'll work and see if I can massage them in there, but I just wanted to point that out. These comments are fantastic. Please keep them coming.
And so those were the comments that staff has. If there's any additional comments from the Planning Commission members?
I think staff's done an excellent job with this. Yeah. Thank you. So this is a public hearing item. And we don't have anyone signed up, but I will open the public hearing, and if anyone has had a change of heart and would like to discuss the guidelines or make comments on the guidelines now, this is the time. Anybody at all? Don't make me break out my auctioneer's voice. Okay, then I'm going to close public hearing. Thank you. Plan Commission, what's your, what do you need from us? A recommendation?
If there are any additional comments that the Planning Commission wanted to include, if they're, if you guys are satisfied, Mr. Riddick, would it be a recommendation to send this to Town Council?
They can, the town can continue to make changes. I think it's hard to read the page numbers. I don't know that well.
Yes.
Gray on gray doesn't seem to be a good combination.
Yeah. I changed them. I like what you're finding. Do you all need more time to comment?
No, I've read it through several times, and I think everything's appropriate. I had, only question I had was building materials and what we were going to specify on that, but you addressed it.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I was looking for it, and this is, okay, maybe. But I had concerns about a statement that was put in the West Main Street portion of D C R.
What page are you on, Charles?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. I think before it was on.
They're hard to see?
It was on 69, I think. But now, yeah, it's changed, now 69. It's been changed. But the applicant is here, and I still have a question for her, if she would, if she could come back to the podium. Yes?
Actually, page 69 had to do with Lower South Church Street.
Well.
65, was it?
What it was, it was, it's probably in one or the other. But there was some question about cohesiveness, citizen cohesiveness and input.
Oh, in the SWOT analysis?
Yes, in the threat analysis, and, you know, the threat that it would, might hamper consensus on developing that area. And I wanted to know, do you have documentation to that, or who do you spoke, who did you speak with to come to that conclusion?
Oh, sure. Well, we did remove that comment. I appreciate the input. We decided to remove that comment. We didn't hold any public hearings, so there's no consent, community consensus on that specific item, but that's just based on experience.
Okay, but there was no discussion with any group, anything?
Uh-uh.
No?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, of course.
Anything else?
Yes, that was, that was going to be my question, and you were, I thought you were going in that direction.
Yes.
For the comprehensive plan, how do these goals, how well do these goals align with the comprehensive plan? I started trying to look through all of it, but I can get through everything or find everything that I thought I needed to know where we were with comprehensive plan, so if you could address how, how well you merged those.
It's been a while since I've looked at the analysis that we did on our SWOT and then looked at your comprehensive plan, so I didn't refresh my brain on those notes specifically. We did look through it again. If you want, we can always add, I don't know what, but something that correlates it closer to the comprehensive plan. There is a portion as well in, one of, I'm blanking on the section, but one of the South Church Street sections where we pull out images of what the comprehensive plan did in that area, because they did such a deep dive, so we did put a highlight on the comprehensive plan's goals for that section, and then we included imagery in there. So the SWOT analysis is based on, because that didn't deep dive, that deep dive didn't happen for every section that is under ECO, we pulled it out, and then when we went through the comprehensive plan, we tried to see what was applicable across everything with that special attention in mind.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure? You ready to send this to Town Council? Would you need more time?
Well, it can still be revised as it goes to Town Council, correct? If anything that we find between now and then, we can just submit it to the Director. Clary, yes? Okay, I'm fine with it.
Okay. So do you need official, is that a motion, Mr. Brown? Send motion.
No further discussion? I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Yes, that we give it a.
Do we have a second?
Recommendation to Town Council, contingent upon any additional comments from the Commission.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of moving this forward?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right. Item number seven, it's another public hearing proffer amendment, six S U P's PC waiver regarding the cottages at Battery. Ms. Clary, what say you about this?
Yes, thank you. The applicants are seeking an amended conditional zoning for the construction of 130 single-family attached condominium dwellings. This is in accordance with Article 3 F B 2. These units would have zero lot lines. Some would feature attached rear detached garages. Each lot would be approximately 34 by 91 feet and approximately 3,094 square feet. They will feature a 12-foot front yard setback. The zoning district will remain multifamily residential. The development will feature a clubhouse, pool, along with a walking trail connection to Battery Park Road and Colonial Avenue. In order to facilitate this project, the applicants have applied for the following. They will be applying for six special use permits. The advertised seventh special use permit has been accommodated on the general development plan for the corner units, so they will not need that seventh special use permit. The first special use permit is relief in order to not provide recreational vehicle parking at one RV parking space per four dwelling units. The second special use permit is relief, which requires attached dwelling unit buildings to be separated from one another by a minimum of 24 feet. These structures will be separated by approximately 17 feet. The third special use permit, which requires not fewer than three attached units and no more than eight attached units, the applicants are attaching not more than two units. The fourth special use permit is for a waiver of yard requirements for zero lot line development, and this will include a six-foot front yard setback to the sidewalk. The fifth special use permit is to allow 10 dwelling units per net developable acre. The sixth special use permit is for a waiver of parking and loading requirements. This will allow three stacked parking spaces for each unit and relief from, relief from the visitor spaces and only provide a total of 11 visitor spaces. And then finally, a Planning Commission waiver. This is for non-contiguous open space. They are providing six acres of common open space and 2.9 acres of active recreation open space. This project does reduce the number of previously approved units by 20 units and does provide additional housing within town. As a reminder, in our zoning ordinance, we do treat condominium units through S U P's if they do not comply with the attached residential requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Okay, this is a public hearing item, so we will open the public hearing, and hey, we've got some folks signed up for this one. Our first speaker, Danny Balot, did I get that right? Is it Balot, Bloat?
Either one.
Well, you pick. It's your name.
My name's Danny Balot, I live at 411 Ginger Loop, Smithfield. As President of the Villas HOA, on behalf of all the residents residing there, we have come to, come before you, before the Planning Commission tonight, to share our concerns in regards to the cottages at Battery Plant. We understand that growth is inevitable in, that word is hard for me to say.
Inevitable.
Inevitable, but we also believe responsible, responsible management of the growth is necessary to maintain a small town of Smithfield. We are concerned that this new development is a drastic deep departure from our existing residential communities and a threat to a small-town charm. We are most concerned about the development request for numerous special use permits, S U P's, and the Planning Commission waiver. That is approved by the Planning Commission, would result in a very dense housing development unlike any other subdivision in the town of Smithfield. You each received a petition from the Villas of Smithfield, signed by 108 residents living there, requesting that all of the S U P's requested would be denied by the Planning Commission. Tonight, five residents of the Villas will present and sequence our collective thoughts on the following topics as they individually speak. First, impact on infrastructure demands. Second, concern for such a high-density development. Three, short-term and long-lasting appearance of this subdivision. Four, affordable and substantial, sustainable of this HOA-run neighborhood. And five, lasting a summary statement. Thank you in advance for your attentiveness and consideration of the issues brought forth from the Villas of Smithfield residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next on the list, we have Kirk Bridgman.
Rogan.
Okay, my apologies.
Kirk Rogan, 314 Ginger Loop, Smithfield, here to speak on the Villas to talk primarily about infrastructure. Thirteen subdivisions were approved some many years ago. 912 homes alone are planned on Battery Park Road. That may have met the requirements when they were approved, but with all the continued growth in this area and the cumulative effects, the impacts of subsequent approvals have likely pushed our current projected expansion to maximum capacity. With the potential for as many as 2,000 cars being introduced to a one-mile stretch on Battery Park Road with no traffic light control set up, we in the Villas will likely be trapped. That was not good planning. The S U P's that were being, that are being sought do the same thing for the cottage project. By approving these S U P's, the Planning Commission is allowing for maximum capacity on that land, just like St. Luke's Project is requesting an increase from 178 homes to over 300 homes. The increased demand and expansion to the infrastructure needed to facilitate the already-approved 1,294 new homes with possibly even more approved, i.e. St. Luke's. Those are all in the long-range plans, but what is not in the plan and cannot be calculated is the strain on our town, our roads, our. is the strain on our town, our roads, our schools, when we push everything to maximum capacity. Much like our cars, we can drive our cars 100 miles an hour, but we seldom run them that hard. We know that if we run an engine that long for the, that hard, it's going to give. We have to look at the cumulative impacts of all these subdivisions and the possible increases to the already-approved plans as putting us at maximum capacity. Examples from a firm this town uses, cooperative strategies, say that our schools are near capacity now and several of them are, will be over capacity very soon. The long-range plan had a new school, West Side, being built, but that has been put on hold due to funding problems. So it looks like we're already at maximum capacity on the schools. In the last budget, one new police officer position was eliminated in lieu of having an additional planner added to help with the anticipated influx of permits. That should tell us something. Now, that position was put back, as I read, but it does demonstrate that we are almost at the point where we're going to have to decide what to cut and what to pay for. Time and wear and tear on all systems is normal and usual and planned, but to push your infrastructure to maximum capacity, things will need replacing sooner and on a larger scale. More road replacements, more road repairs. More sewer expansion, more sewer repairs. More waterline expansion, more waterline main breaks and repairs. Additional fire engines bought, but not just bought. Those fire engines are going to need to be maintained and repaired and then replaced. We're talking about a long-term impact of maximizing our town's capacity, and I don't think it's a good direction to go in. As it relates to the Villas, we're asking, the S U Ps are asking to expand out to every possible inch of development for the developer's benefit. Maximum capacity is not where we need to go. It's not sustainable. We are not talking about the approved growth being acceptable now or for 10 years from now. We're talking about 15, 20 years of running our infrastructure at near capacity.
One minute.
What this town will be left with, who knows? Do we really need to grow at 100 miles an hour, or do we need to grow at max capacity? I think that the people in the Villas and many of the people in this community, and as I've read, some of the people in the city government, feel that maybe the growth does need to be curtailed or at least modified. And last but not least, I formally and respectfully request that the planning commission postpone the vote on the S U Ps for the Villas tonight due to the fact that there was a 483-page document that only seems to have been published last Tuesday that we have not had a reasonable, the public has not had a reasonable chance to review and understand what is going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brugman. Our next speaker signed up is David Hunley. Welcome, Mr. Hunley.
Good evening. I'm David Hunley. I live at 210 Villa Drive in the Villas of Smithfield off of Battery Park Road. The current ordinances are, in part, established to maintain the small-town ambiance of Smithfield, safeguard infringement upon those currently living in adjacent neighborhoods, and promote responsible residential development. Yet, we are here tonight to speak on requested S U Ps that the planning commission is considering for approval for the cottages at Battery, which will result in a very high-density subdivision. In the petition before you, we have asked that these S U Ps be denied by the planning commission. The biggest concern for the Villas residents is the density of this development. Though we have not seen a realistic rendering of what the community will actually look like, based upon what we have seen, this army barracks-style development is not aesthetically pleasing and distracts from the architectural character of our town. The plan allows limited green space, if any, except for the non-contiguous small spaces sporadically placed throughout the neighborhood. This limited green space will be created by the change of the ordinance of eight units per acre to 10 units per acre. We contend the developer is trying to maximize every inch of space to make more of a profit. Such a densely populated area is a concern as to what will be created after the development is complete and families begin to move in their new neighborhood. It was stated at the last meeting that the younger generation do not want to maintain a big yard, but they do enjoy entertaining and engaging in outdoor activities, not to mention child safety and providing a playground area. Will they have the space to do that? Several other requested S U Ps add to the density issue. With such a short setback from the sidewalk to the house, staggered home fronts are probably not the reality, as suggested at the September Planning Commission meeting. Since the homes are so close together and even closer to the street, this will amplify the density of the project and promote a barracks-style looking, look throughout the development. We are in favor of not allowing RV parking. However, this could also add to the density issue if the reason for requesting this S U P is based upon the builder's intent to build the minimum 10-foot-wide driveways instead of the 12-foot-wide driveways required for an RV. Our concern for those who have seen the original plot for this neighborhood is that this development is too high-density for this plot of land and totally out of character for the rest of Smithfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunley. Our next speaker signed up is Lori Newey. If you state your name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lori Newey. I live at 320 Ginger Loop in the Villas of Smithfield. Now that we have addressed density, the next logical step is to ask ourselves, what will this neighborhood actually look like? We have seen the bird's-eye view of this development that shows everything symmetrical and perfectly aligned, but after reading the information provided in this application, are we seeing an accurate rendering of what the neighborhood will look like upon completion? At the September Planning Commission meeting, the developer was asked what would be done to prevent a cookie-cutter look to all the front sides. The general features indicate that the front elevation is listed as full siding, the least expensive option available. Any other front exterior design or alternative material, such as brick or stone, will most likely increase the base price of the home. Therefore, the question arises, will the developer predetermine the model and front exterior facade to be built on each lot, thereby ensuring the homes will vary in appearance, or will it be buyer's choice? If buyer's choice, all the homes could end up looking the same because full siding is the least expensive option. The houses are all shown to be the same depth in the schematic. However, per the floor plans, the depths of the homes vary from 40 to 66 feet. How will this affect the appearance of the community? The rendering shows that every house has a detached garage, yet in the general features there is a non-garage option. This likely means the detached garage is not included in the base price of the home. How many buyers will forego the added expense of a garage to keep their costs down? And unless held in check by the HOA, this could lead to the proliferation of storage sheds. The absence of a garage will definitely have a negative impact on the appearance of the community. Now let's talk common elements. In a condominium community, residents are not allowed to encroach on any common elements the HOA is responsible for maintaining, such as lawns and mulched beds. All four models include a front concrete porch where a resident can sit outside without encroaching on the front lawn. None of the floor plans show a concrete patio at the back of the home, even though two of the models have a door or slider leading directly to the backyard. The application includes a rendering of a backyard with a patio of stamped concrete or pavers and an eclectic-looking pergola defining the space. This is most likely an option at an additional expense to the buyer, but also advances the notion the backyard space is for the use of the resident, while in reality, it is part of the common elements. Without a back patio as a general feature on every home that defines a pad of space for residents to grill, dine, and entertain, this could unfavorably affect the appearance of the community and put condo owners in conflict with the HOA tasked to maintain these backyard spaces. We have all heard the phrase.
One minute.
Fences make good neighbors. Per the developer, there are no plans for any fences on the property, either perimeter or separating lots. Needing to define boundaries could very well become an issue between neighbors in this zero lot line community. Will we then see a variety of fences springing up throughout the development that adversely affect its appearance? And we all know the difference that landscaping can make in a neighborhood. What are the developer's specific plans for landscaping the community, including the backyard spaces, which will affect the overall appearance and subsequently fall to the HOA to maintain? In addition, if 17 feet is allowed between houses, 10 feet of that presumed to be the width of the driveway, how will the remaining seven feet be landscaped such that the residents have room to safely enter and exit their vehicles? And how will the HOA realistically maintain these spaces with stacked parked vehicles in the driveways?
Thank you, Ms. Newey. Your time has expired.
May I just finish my last sentence?
Sure.
Given all of these factors, is this high-density neighborhood what we want for our community and as a new residential standard for the town of Smithfield? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newey. Our next speaker is Mr. Earl Canterbury.
My name is Earl Canterbury. I live at 518 Ginger Loop in the Villas of Smithfield. I would like to talk about affordability and sustainability. Based upon the developer's application, the structures at the cottages at Battery will range in size from 1,040 to 1,326 square feet. The developer has cited a base price figure of $300,000 to $350,000. But have they truly been forthcoming with these quotes? If buyers choose to add a detached garage and/or any other upgrades, this could possibly take the cottages to well over $400,000, each or at least $385 per square foot. In comparison, there were two condominiums here in Smithfield that sold this past summer featuring more amenities and more square footage. The cost of those sales was $196 and $211 per square foot, well below the $385 per square foot projected for this development. The cottages at Battery is not a high-end neighborhood, but more so perceived as an affordable housing option. Is $400,000 or more for these smaller, high-density cottages really an affordable choice? Add to this base price the monthly HOA fee to maintain the buildings and grounds. Developers of new complexes typically start with very low HOA fees to entice buyers. When compared to the Villas having 76-unit owners who pay HOA fees to maintain 20 buildings, a pool, shared driveways, and grounds, the cottages HOA needs will be more than quadrupled. And every buyer's choices to have a detached garage as the rendering of the development shows, the 130 condo owners would have 260 buildings to maintain, 130 driveways, a clubhouse, a pool, and the grounds. On top of the pricey square foot cost, owners would need to be assessed extremely high HOA fees or even a special assessment to have enough in reserves to support the maintenance for their entire infrastructure. Without proper financial oversight, this high-density community is a recipe for disaster. That could very easily lead to a blighted community because it is just too costly to maintain. HOA maintenance on the grounds is another high-ticket item. In looking at the bird's-eye view of this proposed development, there are small patches of lawn and landscaping beds throughout the community. Grounds maintenance can be a big part of any HOA budget. And even more so, here where a lawn service company cannot use larger equipment to mow these small, open spaces, there is also the consideration of maintaining the landscaping beds adjacent to 261 buildings and along the side of 130 driveways that are a couple feet from adjacent houses. The time, the labor.
Yeah, one minute.
And the cost to maintain all this would be monumental and doesn't include the additional upkeep required for the sidewalks and streets. The developer has mentioned on more than one occasion that the cottages at Battery is a new breed of development for Smithfield. Perhaps there's a reason, or several for that matter, that this type of community is not prolific here or elsewhere. Given what I have just mentioned, this type of community is not affordable or sustainable. It requires way too much capital, making it prohibitively expensive to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canterbury. Our next speaker signed up is Sue Mansfield.
My name is Sue Mansfield. I live at 206 Villa Drive in the Villas. You have just heard from several of my neighbors about our concerns about infrastructure needs, density, appearance, and affordability, sustainability. These topics of concerns were garnered from a meeting held at the Villas following the September Planning Commission meeting, based upon two premises. One, the developer's plan submitted for us led to more questions than answers. And two, this high-density development seemed to be on the fast track for approval. And I will emphasize that even more because I found out just today that it's already on the town council agenda for December 3rd, and this planning commission hasn't even voted on it yet. One statement made earlier this evening by our HOA president, Mr. Balot, bears repeating. We understand that growth is inevitable, but also believe that responsible management of that growth is necessary to maintain the small-town charm of Smithfield. Many of us moved to Smithfield to be closer to family, as well as to enjoy country living. In addition, Mr. Hunley stated that we believe that the current ordinances are, in part, established to maintain the small-town ambiance of Smithfield, safeguard infringement upon those currently living in adjacent neighborhoods, and promote responsible residential development. So in summary, the resident. So in summary, the residents of the Villas would ask again, as presented in the petition that you have in front of you, that the planning commission deny all SUPs and the planning commission waiver requested for the cottages at Battery, which will result in such a high-density subdivision, which will likely negatively impact our community and our town now and in the future, as was expounded by our speakers tonight. I have always been taught that we are to be good stewards of all of the natural resources that we enjoy, or that we have been given to enjoy. Will we be those good stewards if this housing development is allowed to be built in such a high-density manner? I think not. And now I would like for all of those residents of the Villas who are present tonight, if you will all stay in place. And I have one question for the residents. All in favor of the planning commission to deny all SUPs requested and the planning commission waiver for the cottages at Battery, please say aye. The residents of the Villas of Smithfield have spoken. Thank you so much for your attention this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mansfield. Next speaker on our list is Renee Bevan.
She's hard act to follow.
Renee Bevan, 101 Beale Avenue, Smithfield. I'd like to bring to your attention a couple of items that this planning commission is apparently not aware of as it relates to the proposed cottages at Battery. Through my multiple emails with town's planning department, it's been become clear to me that our planning department does not have a firm grasp on the intended ownership and required maintenance. When one hears the word condominium, one assumes the condo association will maintain the exterior of the units. Our planning department and some, perhaps all, members of this commission are also making that assumption. Based on my research, that's not the case. I've received multiple contradictory statements from the town's planning department pertaining to the HOA requirements and related ownership of the units. My most recent communication indicates that maintenance of the units will not clearly be outlined until the site plan is complete and HOA documents have drawn up, and that will not occur until after approval. I strongly recommend you determine this prior to approval. One of the members of this commission commented to me that you like the idea of, quote, that you like the idea of condos because the area will be maintained and they'll get painted every five years. That is simply not correct. These proposed units are going to be single-family dwellings with zero lot lines, but the borrower will not own the ground on which the unit sits. The common area will be maintained, but the homeowners will be one hundred percent responsible for the maintenance of the unit, including all exterior elements. Homeowners will be required to obtain an HO3 policy for homeowner's insurance, rather than the traditional HO6 that a true condominium would obtain. The distinction is, an HO3 is designed for single-family homes, while an HO6 is designed specifically for condominiums. I want to repeat, the homeowner will not own the ground on which the unit sits, but will be responsible for maintaining all elements of the unit. Please do some research and try to understand this distinction. Traditional condos have a blanket insurance policy that covers the dwelling's maintenance to include the roof and siding, et cetera. The cottages at Battery are a blend of the worst two components of single-family and condo worlds. The association can levy a special assessment if the monthly fee doesn't cover the maintenance of common areas. If capital improvements are needed and the homeowner doesn't have the funds, the association can and will attach a lien to the property. Ask the owners at the landings at Bennett's Creek how the problem with their pump station is working out for them. These buyers will have all the risk and none of the benefits associated with condo ownership. Understanding the ownership is critical and extremely relevant to the long-term sustainability of this project. The builder will be in and out and has no interest in the future impact of this project on our town. There are distinct and measurable concerns with projects such as these. Because of the risk associated with condo ownership, lenders add an added layer of scrutiny on these loans, and there are pricing adjustments because of the related risk. Additionally, when asked, one of you told me with certainty that the builder will be Quality Homes of Virginia, Brian Mullins Company. I recommend you follow up on that. Mr. Deal told the residents of the Villas that he's partnering with a national builder. I've asked Ms. Cleary no less than six times who the builder's going to be, and Mr. Mullins has declined to answer. My suspicion is he's going to push the application through using his history with the landings and his relationship with town officials, and then sell the property to Orion Homes, H.H. Hunt, D.R. Horton, or another tract housing builder. It's hard to imagine a project worse than Ben's grant, but if you approve this, you will be getting just that. In September's meeting, several of you drew a comparison of this community to our historic downtown in both architecture and density. That's an absurd comparison. Our historic downtown is a lovely mix of well-built homes spanning three centuries, not cookie-cutter, poorly-built tract housing. The other item I want to mention-
One minute.
...is I watched the PC meeting last month. You all felt like this is better than the fifteen, ten units already approved. It's not better. It might be less bad, but that doesn't make it better. Two bad decisions don't make a good one. Two wrongs don't make a right. And the developer's veiled threat in the beginning of September's meeting that if you don't approve this, he will build that, is baseless. The changes in building code after COVID made that building model cost prohibitive. Building costs have not come down since that was approved, so that hollow threat is just that, hollow. Additionally, based on what I know about the cottages, I would prefer the ten, fifteen-unit buildings. At least that won't look like a cross between communist housing and a KOA at the Outer Banks. I'm not sure how to fix this mess, but I don't think, I hope that you don't think the cottages is the best we can do.
Thank you, Ms. Bevan. Our next speaker signed up is Leah Walker.
Good evening. My name is Leah Walker. I reside at 303 Red Point Drive in Smithfield. On January ninth of this year, to allow the cottages at Battery application to move forward, this planning commission and then town council had to vote to approve an amendment to the zoning ordinance since single-family condo dwellings weren't something in our ordinance. At that meeting, Chairwoman Hilligas and Commissioner Pack stated multiple times that the application would have many, many hurdles to go through before it was approved. I sure hope that statement was true, because as presented with no planning department recommendations for changes, it is a long way from being adequately vetted or a development that would be of benefit to anyone other than the developer. Three specific areas that need to be thoroughly disclosed by and discussed with the developer are cost, this impacts the viability of the development, the maintenance expected of the homeowner, and that the builder is identified. First, cost. The idea that these are being marketed to teachers and police officers, as noted in the initial application, is ludicrous. The lowest amount quoted for these homes that start at nine hundred and eighteen square feet is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per home. That is a monthly housing payment of two thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars based on current market rates. The borrower would need twenty-one thousand a closing, and would need to earn about ninety-six thousand dollars to qualify for that type of mortgage. The typical teacher's salary is forty-nine thousand to sixty-eight thousand dollars in Isla White County schools. The typical police officer's salary is fifty-six thousand dollars a year. Additionally, above and beyond the monthly mortgage cost, the borrower will need to plan for a monthly HOA fee that has not been disclosed, and plan for any repair to this single-family dwelling for which they don't own the ground beneath. Secondly, maintenance. Any damage or repair required to the exterior of the home to include the roof due to a natural disaster is on the borrower. For road repairs or any issues that arises in the common areas not covered by HOA fees, the individual homeowners will be assessed an amount over which they have no control. Contrast this fifteen, fourteen-acre developed parcel in front of you in a barrack-like development with neighborhoods that were developed by residents of Isla White County, Scotts Landing, Goose Hill, Gatling Point, Jericho Estates, where homeowners could pick out a lot, own the ground beneath their new home, and budget for their expected expenses. This is a plan to maximize profit for the developer with the greatest density possible, create an eyesore of a development to be marketed to new homeowners who don't understand the hidden cost. Lastly, the builder. Neither developer nor the planning department has identified the builder. This plan, as presented in your package, looks similar to tract home plans that low-cost builders, such as Ryan Homes, design. This is a plan to provide greatest profit possible to developer and could set up new homeowners for financial failure and foreclosure, and create an eyesore for all those living near or passing this development on a critical entrance corridor to Smithfield. The statement by both our planning director and the applicant that they can just build the hundred and fifty units as planned is simply not true, and you as planning commissioners and the developers should know that. The changes in building requirements related to shared spaces after COVID make the hundred and fifty-unit plan on this parcel impossible.
One minute.
But even if it were true, I'd ask you to look at the layout that you have in your packet of the original plan of a hundred and fifty units versus the layout of the hundred and thirty homes. The hundred and fifty units have greater green space and a much more attractive layout and features. The Isla White planning enclosure in your package this evening tells you that students generated from this development will impact the school system. Additionally, in your January ninth, 2024 meeting, you learned that with approved developments in Isla White County, three of our five schools in the county were over a hundred percent capacity. From our town planning department, they note that this project reduces the number previously approved by twenty units and provides additional housing within town. This development has not been vetted. It does have many more hurdles to jump and does not, does much more than reduce the number of previously approved-
Your time is expired.
...by twenty. Given the citizens' concerns tonight, I ask that you defer this decision and discuss more fully as a planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Our next speaker signed up is Darren Cutler.
Good evening, planning commission. Thank you for your dedicated service to the town. Thank you to all the wonderful citizens for coming out to voice your concerns. So during my campaign, I received a great growth-related question from a citizen, and it was, "How do you manage growth and maintain small-town charm?" It's not easy, and this is something that you're, that you're challenged with. And I said, "Well, I think we do this by building good neighborhoods, neighborhoods where families have space to grow, green space for kids to play, and they have room in their yards to have privacy, where school capacity is managed, traffic is planned and mitigated, and citizens that already live here welcome the neighborhood vice being polarized by it." It's past time to stop allowing builders to circumvent our zoning ordinances that sacrifice the small-town charm rather than replicating the fine neighborhoods the citizens of Smithfield currently enjoy. This brings me to the special use permits and the waiver. I'm curious, has anyone directly asked the builder why the planning commission should approve these SUPs or grant the builder, the waiver? This came from another conversation with a voter that I had related to SUPs. And we discussed how the planning commission and town council make SUP decisions. He simply asked, "Do they ask the developer why?" No leading questions, no massaging to get to, get to a suitable point, but why? I would encourage you to ask the first question tonight. One by one, with each special use permit, why should we recommend approval? I would then go a little farther, as they are likely going to have a great response related to profitability and affordability. The next question I'd recommend is, what benefits are provided to the town, current residents, and the future residents of this neighborhood in approving the development with these special use permits vice a neighborhood that adheres to our zoning ordinances? Who benefits from the lack of contiguous green space? The builder. Who benefits from having homes seventeen feet of park vice twenty-four? The builder. Stacked parking spaces? The builder. Eleven visitor parking spaces and no street parking for a hundred and thirty homes? The builder. Exceeding max density? The builder. All this to increase density and thereby developer profits. We could, we could have this discussion about every SUP, except maybe the RV parking spots. One could argue the affordable homes as the upside, but that doesn't appear to be accurate either. Mr. Deal, I believe, said in September, three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, but it's far from clear. Adding the HOA, I believe it's proposed at a hundred and fifty, but we know that's going to grow. The neighboring neighborhood has a, has a HOA in the neighborhood of three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. They have to maintain the roads, the pumping station, the associated infrastructure, and that makes these homes unaffordable. The last neighborhood that this company built near Decoys in Suffolk has a HOA in excess of the Villas. Ms. Bevan made the financial case very eloquently. This is not a good neighborhood the planning commission should allow to be built for our future constituents. When we consider growth, we must also take into account the future residents, the ones that will live in this neighborhood, that will be our neighbors. When we approve residential development, we have to realize we represent those future residents as well. This proposed development is not good for future residents of Smithfield. People want to come here for small-town charm and leave behind-
One minute.
...this kind of density that they lived in in Suffolk or Newport News or Virginia Beach. The SUPs requested for this neighborhood do not benefit the town, current or future The posting of the town council public hearing the day immediately following the election is clearly intended to subvert the will of the citizens, who voted to slow and better manage the growth in our wonderful town. During the campaign, citizens were continuously frustrated with same-day votes without taking time to consider the concerns that they voiced in a public hearing. I'd urge you to take the words of the citizens and table this development while taking their concerns into consideration and to continue further study and review by the commission, and also give the developer time to reconsider their SUPs. You've heard the citizens not only speak tonight but also vote, so I urge you to table this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. We have one more speaker signed up, Mr. George Covington.
My name is George Covington, 230 Villa Drive, Town of Smithfield. I'm here to ask a couple questions. Have the planning commission, and the last drawing that I saw of the developer, that was real home facing a main artery, say Battery Park Road? What is the council, the planning commission, have you addressed that issue with the developer? Is that permitted in the Town of Smithfield? The other question that I have, have anyone addressed the burn for partial A? Well, I go back to 2007, when I first moved to the Town of Smithfield. 2008, I became treasurer and CFO. The declaration for the Villas had an operating budget of seventy thousand dollars. When they met the quota of the occupancy there, they turned it over to the Villas. There was no way we could run the Villas under the budget that they had turned over to us. I received a twenty thousand dollar deficit right from the beginning because the declaration did not reveal all the costs that was associated with it. So I say to the planning commission, take heed for the new residents coming in, what they going to face, because it is a financial difficulty to overcome. My thing is, I met with Wayne Griffin and Bill Hopkins, the director of planning. I said to Mr. Griffin, I say, "The stormwater management system, if you look at the drawing, on the right side has a burn, there's three feet in height, and it was supposed to be shrub planted, twelve to eight-" There's three feet in height, and it was supposed to be shrub planted 1,200 feet down the right side." Don't hold me to the length, but it was supposed to be planted going down the right side. As CFO of the Villas, and I was facing a budget because we, the association, is required to do a reserve study, and they itemize every cost that's associated within the Villas. There was 178 of them. Therefore, the budget had to be changed. The new residents coming in, I had to raise the budget over 130% just to meet the financial obligation to go forward. So I say to the plant, "Take heed with the clearance to leave new residents coming into this town with financial difficulties." Now, being the CFO, I went to Jones and Jones, who represented the clearance and also the residents that was moving into the Villas. I said, "Mr. Jones, the state has said that we have a financial responsibility for the maintenance of the stormwater management system. At that time, the Town of Smithfield, the County of Alwright, the inspector for the town, no, they was the authority, but no information coming forward." I said, "Mr. Jones, how can we meet our financial obligation in the future?" He said, "Mr. Covington, that is an easement agreement." I went down to Alwright, got the easement agreement, put a copy on Mr. Riddick's desk and Mr. Hopkins' desk. I met with Mr. Hopkins, and I called back two weeks later to Mr. Riddick. His secretary said he would be in touch with me, and I haven't heard a high and hair from him. Okay? And, but we have, and now, there's four Ds on the property adjacent to the cottage, Royal Farm, Dollar General, DMV. If they move out tomorrow, who's going to pick up the obligation of dreading that stormwater management system? County told me they never seen nothing like this, and they never did anything. So thank you, and take it under consideration because it is a financial burden. New residents coming in, and you should stand up and represent them coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. That's all the speakers that had signed up, but if any of you are moved to speak, now would be the time if you want to come forward to the podium. You know the drill, name and address for the record, and we're happy to hear your thoughts. Go in one. Go in twice. Okay, we're going to close this public hearing then. Thank you all very much for your thoughts and your attendance and your organization. You're all very organized, and it's very impressive.
You have to give the applicant an opportunity.
Sure. Want to?
You don't have to.
Okay, no one has any rotting tomatoes or anything that they're going to throw at them, right? We're all going to be very civil. If you all would like to speak.
My name's Nathan Deal. Address is 1885 Governor's Point Drive in Suffolk. I don't know how you guys want to handle this. There was obviously a lot brought up. I would say the majority of this, we discussed at the last planning commission discussion, but I'm happy to go over all that again and any new concerns that the commissioners may
Anything new you want to share, make a grand announcement, who the builder is? I'm sure everybody wants to hear that.
Well, I did take a few notes while the residents were speaking, and we can just kind of go through my list of notes if you don't mind. I can't say that I'll be able to address everything or touch on everything. I was writing down as quickly as possible, but we'll give it a shot. And so, in the order that they were brought up, infrastructure was first, traffic was a concern, and I would just like to quickly say that we did have an updated TIA perform just a couple of months ago that showed that there was no negative impacts to the proposed Utilities, the public infrastructure is already in place surrounding the property. We will be tapping into the existing public infrastructure, but it has all, this has been, it's been looked at, and the infrastructure that is there is adequate to extend into the property without any upgrades outside of the property required. So the utilities is not a concern.
If I can also add to that, the fire department and Public Works and Utilities, they are going to create a loop system through this neighborhood which will increase the flow, and so they are in support of this application.
And the town will, during, once we are able to get to that point, hopefully, the town will review all proposed utility systems, and if any inadequacies are determined, then we, as the developer, will be required to make them adequate. So there is no opportunity that this could be developed without adequate infrastructure in place. There was a concern about the delay from this application being posted with a large document, and I will completely agree, it is an extremely large document. A whole lot of that is studies such as the environmental site assessment and whatnot. Honestly, quite boring stuff that really doesn't apply because all those reports came up showing that there were no issues with this development. But that report was not posted just recently. It actually was posted prior to the planning commission discussion that we had two months ago, so it's been on the internet for at least two months now. Density was next, and quite frankly, I feel like we've beaten the dead horse here, but I know there's concern with the density, but it needs to be said again that we're proposing 130 units versus the approved 150. So we're reducing the dens, we're proposing to reduce the density versus what has been approved. There was a concern with the army barracks looking kind of communistic and whatnot. It needs to be noted that the conceptual plan that is, that we've provided is just that. It's a conceptual plan. It's not a final site plan. So being as such, we haven't decided where which houses are going on this plan. Everybody, I think, is aware that we've got a handful of models that we're proposing, and they all have different footprints. So the plan that we have now is kind of a worst-case plan. That's the biggest building pads that are possible. It absolutely will not be built out that way, and we've built that into our proffers. We, since our planning meeting two months ago, we have brought forth quite a bit of proposed proffers, and among those, we're proffering that the buildings are set back differently, each next to each other, so the fronts will not all be in line. We're proffering that there will be no two buildings adjacent or across the street from each other or allowed to have the same elevation, and the colors must be different. So all of that combined, I believe that really addresses this army barracks feeling. Fences were mentioned. Fences will be optional. It's up to the homeowner. If they've got small kids and they want to fence in their yard, that will be an option. If it's a family that lives there that cares to not have a fence, that will not be allowed. The style of the fence is very strictly proffered. We're proffering a picket vinyl fence with four-foot high. There's quite a lot of specs in our proffers about this, so it's not going to be a six-foot privacy fence over here, you know, a black aluminum fence here, a wooden picket fence here. That's absolutely not the case. Everything will be uniform. Let's see. There was some talk about who would be living in here and affordability. We've got the Smithfield meets here. We've got the hospital being built, coming along with new medical office buildings in front of that. I'm aware of a new medical office building project coming up. There are already a lot of professionals in this area, and there will be more professionals coming that will need a place to live, and this would make a great location for them. It would be great for Smithfield if those professionals living here lived in Smithfield and you were able to get their tax base off of them already using your infrastructure and be able to retain some of that tax base within the town. There was mention of this application being fast-tracked for approval, but it was also stated that January of last year, we had discussions on this application. We've actually been working a handful of months before that, so we're well over a year at this point that we have been working with staff back and forth to get here. So I do not see how we could say that this is being fast-tracked. I would like to note that these SUPs allow us to build a product that much better reflects the character of Smithfield over what was previously approved. Yes, there are six SUPs, and there's contention, I understand, on whether or not SUPs should be allowed or not, but we're proposing a product that simply cannot be built without these SUPs, and approval of these SUPs would allow a product that very closely reflects the character of what downtown Smithfield already has. With the utilities, there was mention of a pump station issue, HOA at the landings. That was due to construction of the units there. They actually found a broken pipe there and dirt in it, and that got into the pump station. So the pump station issue there is not a, we have too many units on a pump station or design issue or anything like that. Pump stations, private pump stations, have been around for a very long time, and they are very reliable, and that issue there was due to a busted pipe. So I think that kind of answers that concern. And then, I guess lastly, the note I have here is there's concern about the stormwater management facility. We were very thorough on this in our last meeting. We've been making payments already to the landings without any units being built next door. We continue to strive to be a good neighbor, and will continue to do that. There is an agreement in place already that with Royal Farms, DMV, and us and the Villas to account for this, and so I think that addresses that concern as well. So I know that format's a little weird with me kind of running through, but I just wanted to touch on some of the concerns and would definitely like to answer any further questions that you may have.
So could you clarify? One of our speakers made the point that the homeowner will be responsible for maintenance of the exterior of the residential units. Is that correct? Could you clarify?
We do have in our proffers already that the landscaping will be maintained, all exterior landscaping and grass will be mowed. That's in our proffers. We don't even have an ability to get to final design with this product yet, so I think it's a little bit premature to be trying to nail down the final maintenance and whatnot, but we have been working on our HOA documents, which is, at this point, like I'm saying, extremely premature, but we are working on including the exterior maintenance into our HOA documents as well.
Okay, when you say working on it, just, it will delineate who is responsible for what?
Exactly, that's correct. Our HOA documents will.
And will it be the homeowner?
We are working so that the HOA will maintain the exterior facets of the buildings.
Okay, he didn't heckle you all, so let's maintain some decorum. And are you ready to share who the builder will be? That was an area of interest.
Again, we don't even, we haven't even drawn a final site plan yet, so we are still working on who the final builder will be. We have our options open on that.
Okay, those are just some notes that I had that we wanted some clarification. Anything else, planning commission, would like to ask the applicant for any clarification?
Following up on that, understand that the homeowners' association may cut the front yards, but who's cutting the backyards?
That's included.
But if I have a fence up, how are you going to get to the backyard? That's one question. Obviously, you got a gate, but I'm not being facetious that way, but if you own a condo, you don't own the land, but you're going to allow me to put a brick patio in the backyard, you know, to have a fire pit or do something like that? Who really owns it? It's the homeowners' association owns the land. I don't own that. I have used to it. It's not really my property, so I can't get my neighbor to not come over because it's not really trespassing because it's technically public property, but I don't get the outside land use, which would really be a common space for the whole development across everybody's yard. There really is no individual ownership, so therefore it goes back to, why would you allow fences? Because it's really not my land. So why would I put a fence up to keep you off your land, not my land? Or, I don't get all of that. I don't, I don't understand that part of it because it's not mine to put a fence on. You may say I have a right to this section, but it's really not under my ownership.
It's a very similar situation, the same as the landings at Bennett's Creek and the exteriors of those, the grass is mowed with the HOA. So it's a very similar situation to that.
I don't understand. If I put a fire pit in my backyard, what keeps my neighbor from, it's not yours. It's public land. I'm coming over to sit beside it, even on behind your facility.
But that's, I'm not saying this is ideal, but they can grant an exclusive license or use of portions of the property designated as lots, essentially lots, for each unit. I mean, that's, you're right about the ownership. There will still be the HOA, but they can, they can grant exclusive use to the unit owner for each yard, so everybody would effectively have their own yard. But you're right about the underlying common ownership.
Dr. Pope, I lived in a similar concept of condominium homes, and just to speak before we moved here 22 years ago, the people that put a backyard fence in did not get their yard mowed anymore. They would mow all the common area, but if there was a fence, then that was excluded. Now, I don't know if this is going to be the same situation. I just wanted to point out what other condominium concepts have done.
Chairwoman, Hiligas, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Brown.
Are we still in public comment or we moved on?
Public hearing is closed.
The public hearing is closed.
It's all about you now. Anything else for the applicant?
I have one question on this garage thing. Are these garages truly an additional expense? There's no garages in the?
No, it is planned, that's included.
There are garages included?
Yes.
And can a potential owner choose to build a bigger garage?
No. The garage would be, it's a one-and-a-half-car garage, and it would be that footprint. The owner can choose not to have a garage if they would not like one, but garages are proposed in that base price.
Chairwoman, Hiligas. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Either way, I'll go next.
No, 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 you don't want to wait. Go ahead.
So the density issue, yeah, I understand this is better than the 15, but when you lay it out the way you lay it out, I understand where everybody's coming from with the density. They're packed right there on top of each other. When we go back to our normal density for this type of a development, it would be eight instead of 10 per developable acre. So if you were to come back and propose something that was closer to the eight, I think it would get you to like 104 or 110, somewhere in there, homes instead of 130. How does that impact the overall development?
That would make the overall development not possible financially, to have a reduction in that amount due to the land sale price and home construction price, infrastructure, all that.
Would the people please be quiet and let them speak? Now, we listened to all of you that wanted to speak, and this is very disrespectful. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Ms. Brown, did you have something you wanted to add?
I do. Quite a few. I don't know where to start, actually. But I will commend the citizens that spoke up tonight. I pretty much pride myself on researching these applications. I pretty much pride myself on researching these applications before I come to these meetings. And listening to them, there were some things that I missed, and I appreciate their speaking up and bringing it to our attention. Comments I have about this. And if I need a pause for the applicant to respond, then that'll be fine. I look at the proffers, okay? The proffers. And it was my understanding, well, my perception, that proffers provided some value to the town itself. I looked at the proffers, and I don't see any value to the town. I just don't see it. The SUPs. I mean, quite a few thoughts in how to condense this. But with the SUPs, again, some of the residents brought this up. Who are they for? And the answer is they're for the developer, they're not for the community. You know, if you go through them, I mean, people going through them. They only provide value to the developer. Five and six facilitate density. That's all it does. It facilitates the density. The open space waiver. And Dr. Pope, he brought this up with the fencing. I was concerned about that as well. And that is profit as, these backyards are profit as continuous spaces, common spaces, for everybody to use. And then we find out about the fences. And I don't know how that's going to go over. That's confusing. And that's not the only thing confusing about this application. Someone mentioned fast-track. I think one of the citizens mentioned fast-track. It appeared this application is fast-track. And I can understand that because I felt that way. And I look at the, in the application, where we are supposed to make a decision within 30 days of the application.
That's 100 days.
It's 100 days. But somewhere in there, there's 30 days. I don't want to go back and try to find it now. But there's something in there, I don't know. But there's 30 days calculated into this application somewhere. I don't want to go back and find it. I could do that later, but not to hold this meeting up. But it did appear fast-track to me because I tried to get my hand around, my head around it. And I was trying to understand, how do we get to the SUPs and the amendment to our comprehensive plan to allow these zero lots? And, you know, we, they all came about, pretty much, they all came together during our initial site plan review at the previous meetings. And to me, that seems like there's something wrong with our process. I don't feel that's helpful, not just to the Planted Commission, but the citizens and such to look at these things, that we see these requests for SUPs during that initial site plan. To me, it seems to be, there should be a step in there where Director Planning, that the planning department, could look at these applications and then suggest to us, do we want to make these changes to our ordinances instead of putting them in the application to act on? And that appears to be fast-tracking to me. Again, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. It just seems to be part of our process, and there's something that needs to be changed about that. Now, the, one other thing I come across. You talked about visitor parking, visitor parking spaces. Eleven. Eleven visitor parking spaces. And I asked the applicant, where are these 11 spaces are?
They are adjacent to the clubhouse. There is also room throughout the neighborhood to add several here and there if needed during the final site plan.
Okay. You say in front of the clubhouse?
Yes.
That's what you said?
Yes.
Okay. We're talking about 130 different units, okay? Estimated what? About three occupants per unit?
Sure.
Okay. 130 units. And this clubhouse is supposed to have pools. It's supposed to represent, you know, it's supposed to be available to all the occupants, all the residents in that development. They're supposed to have community activities, maybe HOA meetings for the whole development. Visitors. Where are all these 130 people and their visitors going to go whenever there's a meeting to be held in this clubhouse? Where are they going to park at? I don't see that.
Normally, when you would go to visit somebody...
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the clubhouse that you're talking about, the parking. This parking is going to be used for so many different activities. Are they supposed to make reservations? Even if they made reservations, if the HOA is holding a meeting for all the residents, I suppose all the residents are required to walk to the clubhouse. Nobody's going to be able to drive and park there. There's only 11 spaces for 130 units. I'm trying to understand that. Perhaps you can help me. I don't understand it.
Personally, if I lived in the neighborhood and I was going to the clubhouse, I would walk. It's very walking friendly. Originally, we were not proposing sidewalks, and planning asked us to do that, so we did add sidewalks. It's going to be a very walking friendly neighborhood. If I was going to visit a friend of mine that lived in this neighborhood, I would park at their house because most likely I would go into their house with them, you know, be there for a little while, and then go to the clubhouse and use that and come back. So if I'm going to see somebody specific there, there's room at their house to park at their house and be with them. I don't know that many people that would not live in this community would come to an HOA meeting there, but there are visitor parking spaces there for them if they desire to.
Need 11 spaces, 130 units.
Okay. There's also, excuse me, am I correct? That the street width allows for on-street parking on one side of the street with the fire... Yeah. So there's on-street parking on one side of the street, and that's due to, that's within the fire code.
That's within the fire code?
That's, yes. The fire code approves that.
Okay.
So there's a lot more than 11?
Yes, ma'am. We're not striping spots in the street, just as many public streets do not stripe the side of the street, but allow it.
Okay. One of the speakers brought up the traffic. V-Dot is going to have pork chops on South Church Street, limiting which way you can turn. And some, someone from the Villas spoke about how difficult it is for them to make a left turn out of the Villas on the Battery Park presently, with the traffic situated the way it is presently. And I personally have observed traffic trying to make a left turn out of the Wellington. I think it's something else now, but the Wellington Estates. I've observed just driving, my daily errands, people having difficulty during rush hour making left turns out of the Villas, Wellington and the Villas, as mentioned previously. Okay? I've seen this. And this is, we haven't got to the point where the number of units approved for Mallory Point is going to impact that traffic. So it's going to get worse. And we're going to, we have to look. We do. We do have to look into the future, the impact of what's happening into the future. And looking at your traffic, the way you have it laid out, and these are private roads, I understand, inside of the cottages, they're private roads. The driveway number two on the Battery Park is one lane in, one lane out. During rush hour, and looking at the traffic, I guess I was looking at the TIE, the traffic impact analysis. During rush hour, there was, I saw a figure, and it could be wrong, I don't know. But I saw a figure where 70% of the traffic coming out of that, that turn, that exit, number two, which is the one farther down Battery Park away from Royal Farms, that number two road. It says 70% of the traffic exiting that exit is going to make a left turn during rush hour. One lane. Why not a dedicated left turn lane? So people who are going right can just continue on their way instead of having to wait on everybody to take a turn. To me, that's a shortcoming in traffic right there.
If I may?
Please.
There's four available entrances to this project. There's two on Battery Park and two on Church Street. I don't, I can't think...
I'm talking about Battery Park right now, just Battery Park. It's going to be problems on Church Street, but Battery Park.
Okay. So there's four entrances that are available to this community. I personally have not seen a community that has connectivity that is that excellent, that has four entrances to choose from of how to exit their neighborhood. Two is the code, and normally, that's what's built.
Left turn, a dedicated left turn lane? Is that nothing we would consider?
There's, there's the ability, a left turn lane would be accessing South Church Street.
No, from Battery Park.
Right. But if somebody turned left out of Battery Park, where would they be headed?
Towards South Church Street.
Okay. So if somebody's trying to make a left turn out of the front of the project on Battery Park and access Church Street, there are two accesses over on Church Street, one adjacent to the Royal Farms and one adjacent to the DMV.
They still have the same problem. They got to cross traffic, heavy traffic. In fact, it's worse on Church Street because you got to cross two lanes. It's worse.
The, an updated traffic impact analysis was performed just several months ago, and it shows what we're proposing here to be more than adequate.
Okay.
Well, but if you also look at it, Mr. Bryan, when you're out beside Royal Farms, you can't turn left out of that exit anymore.
Right.
They've got a fork out there.
That's part of my point.
So the only way to turn left on South Church Street is through the DMV parking lot. So all this traffic is going through the DMV parking lot, not really on a road. So if you're going to access, access South Church Street, you're going through the parking lot.
That's a concern.
When there was the traffic study, was there any mention of a possibility of a light like at Wellington?
There was no mention of a light being required.
With, not only this project, but currently, the Villas have a problem getting out to turn left. When they build out Mallory, that's really going to bugger up everything. So to me, a traffic, I mean, no traffic engineer, but I'm just thinking that a stoplight is desperately needed, and the place to do it would be at Wellington.
That was part of Mallory's proffers. They're doing a signal warrant analysis.
Oh, good.
At that intersection, once they reach a certain phase of their development.
Okay. Thank you.
But they've also, I think, they've also posed that they would pay for that traffic light if it has to be, to go in as well, if it warranted to go in. So that's been accounted for by Mallory Point if or when it deemed necessary. They agreed to that during their approval process.
Right. Yep.
So I do not see how that could not address this concern.
I think what Mr. Bryan is saying is if you only have one lane exiting onto Battery Park, you're either going to go and turn left or right. There's only two ways you can go. A car that's trying to turn left who's hung up for five minutes is now backing up all traffic into your development.
Thank you.
He's just certainly asking, can you have two lanes? So if somebody's turning right, I don't have to sit there and get frustrated because they can't turn because of the traffic. I think that's simply all he's asking.
Okay.
Okay. Another concern. I looked at the footprint from that 15-unit apartment or condo that was proposed before. And I'm looking at your, your site plan and what it's proposed, and I'm concerned about the impervious area, the amount of impervious area that this layout of these 130 units present. And again, one of the citizens mentioned that they could see the green space on those 15 apartments, the way it was arranged. They could see the green space. It was easy to see. And looking at yours is very difficult because the space is filled up with these units. Now, and look at yours, you don't, you don't portray the driveway. The driveway, that's additional impervious area. So when you put the driveway drawing, the drawings of the driveways in there, it's not as green as that site plan looks. It's not as green. And I compared the two, and on yours, you, your application states that there is 9.1 acres of impervious space in the site. On the one with the 15, it doesn't show that. It doesn't show that period. And I asked previously, did you have calculations on that? If you put in all this, all this concrete, you know, all this impervious area, have you done calculations to find out if the BMP is going to be able to handle that stormwater runoff? And I still haven't seen that. I haven't heard anything about that. So...
Would you like me to respond?
What are we going to do? What are we going to do about that?
You want me to respond?
Please.
The driveways are shown on our site plan, actually. They are shown on there. And the overall impervious acreage, the BMP was designed for more than we are proposing. Now, again, the Isle of Wight County is going to review that stormwater management with our impervious, and they will check and make sure that the BMP... We will not be allowed to have final site plan approval without the BMP being able to handle the impervious. Isle of Wight County Stormwater will not give us an approval if the BMP cannot handle what we are proposing. That is how every site plan that's approved works.
Okay. You're saying all of it?
But we are proposing less than what the BMP was designed for, for our parcel. Now, obviously, it's handling other parcels as well. Those are on their own. But our parcel is under the impervious that our parcel was allotted for in the overall stormwater design of the pond.
Do you have the acreage on the previous 15 apartment unit? What was the acreage for the impervious surface on that?
I can't compare that number.
We do not have that number.
Okay. So it's nothing to compare to?
If you do compare the open space, the previous 15, the previous units, they had 5.5 acres of open space and 2.75 acres of active open space. This application actually increases that because they are providing 6 acres of common open space and 2.9 acres of active open space.
Is it 2.9? Is that the continuous space that's behind each unit?
Correct. That includes the green space.
Oh, okay. And someone else mentioned, I don't know, I don't remember who has brought this up, but are the garages optional?
A homeowner is able to defer a garage, but the garage, at the initial purchase, the garage is included in the price.
So they could opt out of it and pay less?
They could opt out of a garage, yes.
And whenever they decide they want to build a garage, it has to be within specifications at their expense?
Yes. They cannot come back and build a four-car garage in their yard.
They could what?
I said they cannot come back and build a four-car...
Sorry.
They cannot come in later and build anything different than, than what is here.
Okay. And of course, it would be at their expense at the time and market pricing.
If they were to wait until later, yes, that would be their expense later.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Another point, another question I have. This. The exception, I guess the waiver. How we're defining this, this development? I had asked the question, uh, are they really attached or detached units? And I was given the, the answer that they are considered attached units because of the SUPs in the application. Is that wrong? Please correct me.
They are considered attached dwellings because there's zero lot line development with the attached rear garages.
Okay. Okay. I'm looking at this. And they're considered attached because of zero lot lines and the attached garages. And I had my, I had a problem wrapping my head around this.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Please.
Our, our zoning ordinance only has multifamily residential, i.e. attached. You have attached residential, you have downtown neighborhood residential, neighborhood residential, and suburban residential. So the only two structures, I guess downtown neber- neighborhood residential probably could be attached. But the only two ordinances we really have that allow for buildings to be attached together, residentially, not commercially, residentially, is multifamily residential and attached residential. We don't have a separate zoning ordinance that allows for a separate building, individual like this. And so Tammy had to mesh the attached residential guidelines to create it, which was the purpose of the special amendment that we did earlier. So there isn't a guideline that states this. So we're, we're, you're trying to mesh or, or sort of blend this. And so the closest thing that matched was attached residential. And that's, and that zoning ordinance is six, six to eight units per acre is the way it is. And multifamily residential density is twelve units per acre, and this is a mesh of those two things to try to allow him, to allow him to say, yes, we want an individual unit, but we have to put it under some sort of ord- ordinance, and the closest ordinance is attached residential. It's just a label, but they're not really attached. The buildings aren't gonna be attached, other than the garages.
Garages, yeah.
Okay.
Because the property is currently zoned, the MFR zoning and attached, uh, single family attached dwellings are a permitted use by right under that zoning designation. They then just follow the AR guidelines. Um, but it is, they are considered attached dwellings under the multifamily residential zoning district.
Because of the zero lot line?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I had a problem with it. And that's a reach. It's a reach. Uh, and it, it sort of cleared it up for me. When I read, um, one of the Sniffle Time articles, it kind of cleared it up for me, okay? And, and just, just reading from it. This is, um, I asked the question, would it impact this, this application? And in the article it says, because the exception would only apply to detached residents which, while detached, would have a budding garages, and as such are considered attached because of the budding garages.
Right.
Every unit on the perimeter's application doesn't have an abutting garage. I don't see it. So are they attached or detached? The attached is defined by a budding garages. And the way it's laid out, I would say fifty percent of the units don't have a, a garage abutting them. And then it's optional whether a, a buyer will get a garage. So we're playing both sides of the, this is, this word salad, we're playing, we're playing both sides of it.
Mr. Bryan, that's, that's not his doing, that's our doing. Okay, no, but let me explain. That's, that's just the way the ordinance is written, it's imperfect. There, everybody acknowledges that, but his application is proper under our current ordinances. You, it's abundantly clear that each one of those residences is, is detached. You're exactly right. You don't have to vote for this, but it's not filed incorrectly, and that's not something to get hung up over.
Okay.
Okay, just, that's just not, that's not a hill to dial on because it's just, the application is correct. Now, whether you like it or not is a different issue, and that's your, your purview, and you can vote for it or not. But that's not, they didn't do anything wrong in making this application. They applied, uh, in the correct way under the ordinance as it's written. And Ms. Clary will, will sit here and say, it's not perfect, and we all acknowledge that, but it's, it's legal.
And if I may, it needs to be noted that, that it's been said, but what we're proposing here doesn't fall any, under any one of these zonings, hence the need for the special use permits. The special use permits allow you as a town to approve or deny this, but if we went with code amendments, then i- if you amended your code to allow this, then you allow any single developer in the future to come do this without you having any ability to say yes or no. So if this is approved with these special use permits, it absolutely does not allow anybody else to come in and do it again unless you, unless they go through this same process. Versus if you amended your code, then you would be opening yourself up to just allow this to, to anybody that wanted to.
So Ms. Clary, I, can, can you confirm that the reason that these SUPs had to be requested is because our ordinance does not support them? And so to protect the town, giving just by right to anybody, that's the reason for the SUPs?
That is correct. The reason, um, the applicants came before Planning Commission Town Council and amended the zoning ordinance in or, in order to allow condominium dwellings, um, subject to the AR regulations unless approved by a special use permit. Um, again, going through them, just like the previous application, uh, it also requested a waiver for no RV parking. Um, item two is the separation, which is approximately seventeen feet as opposed to the twenty-four feet. Uh, the third, uh, the third SUP application is for no fewer than three attached units. This is a unique situation as it's a zero lot line development. Uh, we do believe this was intended for more townhouse style approach, but because it is an attached single family dwelling, it does fall under that. So again, that's a special use permit because they're only attaching two, as opposed to the traditional minimum three. Um, the fourth is for, uh, the front yard setback. Uh, they were originally meeting the twelve foot front yard setback. However, Planning Commission did request that sidewalk be put in, and because of the way our code is written, it's either to the back of the sidewalk or the back of the curb. Because there is a, a sidewalk, it now shortens that front yard setback to the six feet instead of the twelve feet that they had originally proposed. Um, the fifth, again, that's on the density, which they're requesting the ten. Multifamily does allow, uh, a density up to twelve. Uh, for the waiver of, um, the required parking spaces, because they are attached units, it, the ordinance requires one parking space per every three units. Um, this would be a requirement of forty-four spaces, uh, at the clubhouse, which is, is quite a lot of spaces for this, this small development. Um, and also to go through the timeline for you.
Yes, please.
December of twenty twenty-three, the applicants first appeared before the Planning Commission with a very similar, uh, uh, conceptual plan. This is when they first started to, uh, work on their application, uh, for the text amendment. Uh, it was a public hearing at the, uh, Planning Commission in January of twenty twenty-four. Um, again, this application package appeared, uh, in September of twenty twenty-four. Um, and then now is a, a public hearing at the November Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if, if you recall, uh, Mr. Bryan, we actually met with you before the December. Uh, we met a couple of months prior to that with you, um, just bouncing ideas off and, and getting your input back then. So it, it's been well over a year that, um, that we've been working on this with the town.
Yes, I remember. But, uh, all this zero lot line stuff, I don't think all that was discussed. Um, and then the, the language, I, I, you know, I'm sorry, forgive me for being, for being literal. But when I read something, it, in, in the recommendations, it says we treat condominium units in the zoning ordinance through SUPs. If they do not comply with the attached residential requirements, we treat condominium units in the zoning ordinance through SUPs. To me, when I read that, it sounded almost like we had done this before. And that's not the case. We're treating this application through SUPs. We haven't done this before.
Uh, Mr., nobody's asked for it before, Mr. Bryan.
That's the way it's signed, that's the way it reads to me.
No, that's not what she means. What, all she's saying is that if you want, if a developer, not, just, not this-
Going forward, going forward with all, yes, I get that, I understand that.
Who's to come in and do a, a similar project in a condominium format, they, they require an SUP. It's not, there's no specific zoning district that you can look at and say, I want to file under this zoning district and that will permit a condominium. It, it, it gives the Planning Commission and the Town Council another level of scrutiny to say this is good or this is not good, which is kind of what you're doing right now. That's the whole point of this special use permit. They can't just come in, there's no, there's no box that they can check in. That's the district that would permit condominiums in, in this format. So that's why they have to file for the su- special use permit. And that gives the Planning Commission and the Town Council the ability to put conditions on the application. That's the whole point of special use permits. I understand, a special use permit is a really, you know, it's, it's a term not in favor because, um, it sounds like you're granting somebody something special. Dr. Pope said last month, and he is in ways correct, the special use permit ma- means that the developer has to demonstrate why they should get this, and the, and the locality has the right to put conditions on the application where if it was a straight zoning, they would not. And so that's kind of the mis- misunderstanding by special use permits. And I'm not saying this is good or bad, I'm just trying to explain that's the way it works. So we're not doing this just for this gentleman, it would be, it would apply to anyone else. We speak, we feed everybody out of the same spoon.
And, and, uh, yeah.
And I'm only feeling slightly scrutinized. I just, just can't, I had to throw a little laughter in there.
Yeah, but, um, that was my concern about these SUPs. Uh, going back to the meeting, I guess it was in December, January, when the discussion came up about zero lot lines, I was concerned about that at that time, I expressed my concern about that, but we moved forward with it. And then when the site plan for this application comes up, now we got the SUPs to look at in the application. Every time this application takes a step forward, it seems like we are proving this thing. It seems like we are proving it.
The, the zero lot line concern, um, that, really the zero lot line, it's a theory because it's condo and, and there's not lot lines. So there's technically not a house on a lot line. There's seventeen feet of separation between units. So technically, that would be half of seventeen, it'd be eight and a half. There's technically an eight and a half foot side setback for each unit. If you, if, if you wanted to look at it that way, but there's no property line, so it, it's, there's, there's not really a zero lot line.
It is or isn't? You asked for zero lot lines, it is or isn't?
It, it is a zero lot line because in our definition of single family attached dwellings, we define zero lot line dwellings as, as, as such. Um, and so that was the only way that we could classify this product as a zero lot line, which would signify a single family attached dwelling.
Can I ask a different question in a different way? Same, similar question. In our attached residential ordinance, it says side yard setbacks are sixteen feet between buildings, twenty-five feet for public access. So it was next to a road, that'd be twenty-five feet, sixteen feet. Has a rear yard setback of twenty-five. If you went through this through a strictly attached residential, you would have a special use permit that says we're gonna waiver the twenty-five foot year, year, uh, rear yard setback to zero. You wouldn't do it all the way around. You would just say, look, if he wants to put a garage on the property line in the back, we would just waive the twenty-five feet. Because his seventeen feet pretty much combines attached residential side yard setbacks based on the ordinance as it's written there. Except for the ones that abut the street. The ones that are street are twenty-five, the ones between your buildings are sixteen, you're seventeen. But the only thing that's really in violation of the AR is the rear line setback because of the garage. So I think they just said zero, meaning all the way around. But then you would have to sort of amend it for the front and the rear because the front, I didn't, I don't have the front one pulled up right here, but she's keeping it simple by saying zero, but this is what he's doing. But really, all you're doing is changing the rear yard setback because of the garage. You can't build within twenty-five feet of the rear sideline. Well, that wouldn't make sense on his lot. That's the way it's written in the AR ord- zoning ordinance right here. So really, I mean, even though you're hung up on zero, you're thinking zero all the way around, you're gonna put the building right on the property line at zero, it's not really what he's doing. He's got to be able to maintain his seventeen feet by special use permit, the one he's asking for.
But the other aspect of the zero lot line is it increases density.
Well, I get that, yes, it does. Majorly. We could tell him we want fifty feet between houses, which would decrease his density.
Okay, the, the concern is maybe-
That's an argument that he's asking for, and you have to say, do I agree with that or not? But he's not far off, well, actually, he's a foot over according to the ordinance.
But if we filed this-
I don't know where the twenty-four came from. I don't know what ordinance we picked that out of, but I haven't seen where the twenty-four foot is the variation on the SUP. But on the attached residential, side yard setback, it said for any yard abutting private travelway or parking bay, twelve feet on, I don't know, I mean, y'all have to read that, y'all read those every day, but-
I'm not certain, but I think the twenty-four foot reference corner lots or something, I'm not certain.
The side, I'm sorry, the side yard setback for, um, abutting adjacent lot lines would be twelve feet on each side, which would be twenty-four feet of separation.
Okay, thank you. But it's not really zero that he's doing.
I, I get it, I get it.
Zero would be if they were all attached, like the original renderings that, that we've seen. You know, with that, there were fifteen units, excuse me, fifteen buildings of ten units. None of those units had, all of those units had a zero lot line because they were all attached.
Yes, ma'am, more like a townhouse. If you had a two-story townhouse and there were, say, six in a row in the same building, that would be a zero line setback. Zero lot line.
And one other quick thing you said, just a comment, you said, you know, it seems like we're moving one step closer every time we talk about this. In my opinion, we're giving him the feedback to say, we do want this, we don't. You know, he's gotta take our data and decide if he can live with this or not, change it or not, and then we have to make the decision on that base or not. But we're giving the ideas to say, this is gonna fly, this isn't gonna fly. And he's gotta decide if he's gonna go with that or not. But yes, we're discussing this in detail to give him feedback to say, what are you gonna do? How are you gonna handle this, and are, are you gonna adapt? If you ask him for a left-hand turn lane and he's not gonna give it to you, then how are you gonna, what are you gonna think? But you're asking to say, look, what would make sense to me is to have a left-hand turn lane. But you're giving him specific details that he either has to incorporate into a site plan or not for you to feel comfortable moving forward. If he says, I wanna do this with the changes that we are proposing to him based on our review and what the public is saying.
If you're asking for two lanes exiting at the front, we can, we can add that dur- if, if, if it's possible, we'll add that during the final site plan. That's-
I'm just, I'm just saying he asked for it, I'm not saying anything one way or the other.
Right, well, we-
That's his discussion point.
I can't tell you tonight, yes, it'll fit, but we'll, we can evaluate that, and if it will, then we would, we would gladly add two lanes exiting to Battery Park Road.
One last thing, and I'll be done. Uh, there was a memo from the school system, Isle of Wight County Schools, about the impact to the schools and what it would cost the school system for each one of these students. I'm just bringing it up. Think about it, just bringing it up. The cost, it, it's a lot more expensive than I thought.
Well, I'll go back to discuss infrastructure because all of the infrastructure, roads, whether we agree or disagree, traffic, schools, maybe fire, maybe police, um, that's all been accounted for in the previous approval. In the previous approval, what's sitting on that TV screen right there of the, of the fifteen buildings- In the previous approval, what's sitting on that TV screen right there of the fifteen buildings, all of that had already been accounted for.
That being said, my question.
That's already been accounted for. That's irrelevant to this discussion.
That being said, my question is, are the roads in this development before us and now as wide as the ones that was in the previous application?
I can't answer that.
Are they as wide?
The roads that are proposed now?
Yes.
I would believe so. Typically, I would call that basically an apartment project. And typically, I don't have the final plans for that. I don't think final plans were ever done. But typically, the drive aisles for those are twenty-four feet wide, and we're proposing twenty-six.
Okay. Couple of other issues while we're asking for our wish list here. But the walking trail, we discussed, we didn't really want it behind the units, next to the pond. But, I mean, obviously, you're not redrawing your site plan to do this. But that's all going to be proffered out and say you were not putting it in there. But it still needs to connect to the Battery Park Trail at some point. So up on your, I guess that would be your northwest corner, you know, you need to, I guess you'd have a trail that would still connect back out to the sidewalk without it going behind the buildings. So those little changes, I think. And then, somebody mentioned.
While you're on that, if I may. I recall as well that being discussed at our last meeting, and I believe the overall consensus was, many of the adjacent residents did not care for a trail there with people walking along the BMP. Safety was brought up, there was many items like that that were brought up. And I believe that how, I believe staff or one of the members brought up that the sidewalks were required to be added, and so that would provide the connectivity.
But you still would need, so on your northwest corner, all the way at the end of the BMP, that last unit, I'm assuming there'd be a little sidewalk right there. Does that make sense? Or are you saying you're going to make them go all the way through the entrance to get to the sidewalk?
I see, a sidewalk along the BMP just until the first street there?
Whatever that fifty feet is.
Yeah, we could definitely include that.
The, so somebody mentioned earlier about RV parking lot. But RVs and boats and things like that are supposed to be, you said, on the homeowner's association when you do the draft, are not going to be allowed to be able to be parked at these houses and be parked in the, in these. But if I understand, the Smithfield also has code codes that they're not allowed to have boats and RVs in the front of the house or on the side of the house, only in the back of the house, correct? For just normal storage across the town, period, right?
Right. They can't, they have to be in the rear yard or to the rear of the side yard.
Yes. So they're not going to be any RVs or anything parked in the parking lots or the driveways, whoever said that earlier.
Absolutely not.
The RVs aren't going to be allowed, or boats and those types of, I'm assuming, types of vehicles.
And our proffer number seven addresses that. Boats, RVs, trailers, campers, all of it.
And then, I would also argue with you about homeowners' association that you would not allow individual sheds in the yard. Either they elect for the standard garage or not, but not have additional sheds and things of that nature because then everybody's going to have non-conformity going through there. So I think your homeowner's association should reflect, "We're not going to allow," you cannot build a garage if you want to save money, but you're not going to put a shed back there either.
We absolutely agree. We're happy to include that in the HRA docs.
But be clear of this RV thing. RVs allowed in the development? And if so, are they being parked in the rear of the unit and not allowed in the front?
They're not allowed at all.
They're not allowed at all? Okay, that's what, I wanted to know that, okay. Sir, okay. Thank you.
Chairman, I've got several issues about the proffer.
Yes.
Mr. Deal, in proffer number three, well, last month, September tenth, there was a big discussion about the elevations and what things would look like. And you have presented several elevations this time with some detail on them. But in proffer number three, you mentioned them, you referenced the elevations, but you don't make any definitive statement that these elevations are incorporated into your development. And so, I guess what I'm telling you is you need to, if you're going to say, if you're telling the town that you're going to build these units or some variation of them, you got to say that. Otherwise, you don't have to build. Now, Ms. Clary is very correct about this. We talked about it today. The, these are going to have to come through the, for review.
Correct, entrance quarter.
Under Carter or Overlake District. But let's say that you're not the developer, and they decide to do something else, and they come in with a product that is completely different than what you're showing us tonight. That's going to be, that's going to make people very unhappy. And so if what you're saying is you're going to, this is what it's going to look like, you need to fashion some sort of statement in your proffer that say, "These are our elevations and this is what we're going to do."
Okay.
I mean, you did address materials. I mean, I looked back through the minutes about this, and there was a big discussion two months ago about materials, and you dealt with that. One thing that Mr. Pack, I think, raised was an issue concerning slab foundations. You put in here that there would be a minimum of twelve-inch exposure?
Right.
Okay, and I'm assuming that was your attempt to address that. So I assume what you're still thinking about is, I think you're, it's one of your proffers.
Minimum of twelve inches of foundation exposure.
Okay, no. So, that doesn't say it's, that doesn't prohibit slab foundation. You're just saying there's going to be a reveal, correct?
Yes, I believe that's what was desired during that conversation.
Well, I know, but if you don't specify that that's going to be, there's going to be a veneer, a brick veneer, or a stone veneer, or something else, you can put concrete block up there, and you would have met the terms, and I don't think anybody's going to be very happy with that.
Okay.
So you need to address that. The, I think Ms. Heligas asked you earlier about the issue of the exterior maintenance of individual units. If that's going to be what you propose, that needs to be specified in your proffer. You'd have to amend your proffer to put that in there, that the condominium documents will provide that. The condominium association will maintain the exterior units. That's got to be proffered.
Okay.
Or otherwise, we can't make you do it. If it's not in writing, and you're telling us you're going to do it, it's got to be in writing.
Okay.
To Mr., to Dr. Pope's point about the sheds, same thing. It's got to be, if you're going to prohibit sheds other than your approved garages, it's got to say they're prohibited.
Okay.
And then, I don't know who did your proffers. I don't know if it was an attorney or not, but the reference to fifteen point two, that's twenty-three oh four D. Twenty-three oh four D doesn't exist. I don't know where that came from. That has to do with, I don't know what it's affordable housing, I looked at it a minute ago. It's, that has to do with affordable dwelling units, and does not, it is not the code section that addresses voluntary proffers. And so, if somebody in your organization is not a lawyer, did this, then you need to turn it over to a lawyer to make him.
Okay.
Make him comport with what the law is. And that's just, that's my, because I went back and looked at the minutes from last, at the September meeting, and these are, these proffers were prepared subsequent to that. And you did deal with a lot of the issues, but I don't think that you dealt with them in the way that was anticipated.
Well, we can agree that all of that is desired on our end, so.
Okay, but that's, you'll have to, you know, all that has to be in writing.
Sure.
That would have to be something that you, if you're going to proceed with this, you're going to have to amend your proffers and resubmit them.
Is that something that needs to be handled prior to a planning commission vote? Or can that?
Yeah, it has to be, yeah, it has to, you have to bring that back. These can, all this has to be, your pro, they can't recommend this to planning commission until your proffers are correct, I mean, until the town council, until your proffers are correct.
Anything further, Mr.? Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, if you have nothing else further, Mr. Bryan.
Does anybody have a summary statement in their mind other than me? Well, I think it's fair to the developer to give him a little bit of insight of where we stand because all of this costs him money. So I think it would, if you're prepared, not to vote, but to prepare to give him a gestalt of where you feel, I think it would be appropriate, in my opinion. So if you would like for me to lead off, I will.
I would love for you to do that, Dr. Pope.
Okay. I'm only one vote, okay? So, I don't like to use the term density because I don't have a problem with density of this project. I have a problem, the more appropriate word would be cluttered. It's a very cluttered development. I'm not against these single-family units like this of any size, whether, I'll call these on the smaller side versus something a little bigger. But these are very cluttered. I think they're very expensive. I think the maintenance is going to be very expensive. I don't know about the insurance issues with this, but I appreciate Ms. Bevan's input and think that insurance would be incredibly expensive. And I just don't think this is a better development than what has been proposed as a multifamily residential area. And I have a hard time supporting this at the way it exists right now, even with the proposed changes that you are looking at. These are changes that if the other commissioners or even town council wishes to approve, I mean, I'm arguing with you about trails and left-hand turn lanes and doing this and doing that because if it gets approved, I think those are important changes that need to be incorporated. But for me, I just don't think I'm ready for this amount of clutteredness on this type of development. If it were less cluttered, I don't want to use the term dense, i.e. not one hundred and thirty units, it might be a different picture. But I don't think that, in my mind, with everything going forward and with a lot of the financial uncertainty of how this development would proceed at over three hundred dollars a square foot, I just don't see the viability of it in the town. And I worry about what would happen to these types of buildings if they went unused, unaffordable, or what would really happen at this level of density. And I just don't see how this development's going to proceed and be financially stable, in my opinion. Now, I may be completely wrong, and that's why I'm not a developer. But I just don't think I can get behind this. And so, and that's just my personal opinion. And if that affects your ability to move forward and take that information, then I think you need to do with it what you want to because you've invested a lot of money in this, and in my opinion, it's not fair to string you along.
Other thoughts?
A lot of things were brought up by the citizens tonight, and they raised a lot of questions in my own mind. Not that we haven't discussed some of that, but things were brought up like exterior maintenance and things like that, that, to me, having lived in a similar type situation where the maintenance was included on the exterior, the person owning the condominium or condo, or whatever term you want to use, was responsible for the interior, but everything on the exterior was handled by the HOA, which I happen to be on that board. And there are just too many unanswered questions here. I, we don't know who the builder is. We, it just keeps going on and on and on. And I agree with Dr. Pope that these things, it doesn't look to me like this is going to be affordable housing. Again, I could be wrong. I don't know what people are willing to spend on a unit like this. I probably would not be. And that's kind of where I am right now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I'll say I am, was all for doing what we did to get to where we are, which is try to find an alternative to the multifamily and to try to keep it in the character of the town by doing single family, you know, units and making it look like something that belongs in the town. My personal opinion is, if it's going to take on the character of the town, going back to what Dr. Pope said, getting them crammed together and having the density, and he didn't want to call it density, but I'll call it the density. The density in there is so tight that I don't think it's matching the character that we have in the town. So I do like the transition from multifamily to single family, and the idea to do that, and do that the way we did to approach it, I think, was the right way. Special use permits, that's what brings it before us. So I know I've heard a lot again about these darn special use permits, what it's the tool we use to get this review done. So, like I said, I have a lot of questions as well about the condominium I have since I first heard that we were going to do condominium. Same thing on the selection of a garage. Okay, I decided not to put up a garage. Does that land now belong to the rest of the community? Or whenever they put up a garage, how does the transfer of all that? There's just so many questions that go along with that. I don't know how we move forward without having that homeowners' association and the community, or the condominium agreement and whatever in front of us to understand how all this works. And I know from the developer's perspective, to get to that point, you don't usually do all of that work and put all that investment in it before you know if you're going to do it. So I do say we're at a point where it's really going to be difficult to figure out how we move forward, get all the answers to the questions, and know where we're at. So, I think the proffers definitely help lay out where that's going to go. If we get the proffers that give us enough definition, maybe we can move forward. I will still say that I will have a problem with it being as tight as it is in there, being on board with this layout. But I do like the single family better than the multifamily. But the green space that was available on the multifamily, to me, is probably more in concert with what the town would be looking for than what this current layout is.
Thank you. I guess my, well, I don't guess. My opinion is that we're at an impasse. And I'm not sure how we can get past that. Perhaps we defer everything at this point and have a meeting with the planning commission and the developer to iron out our questions, what would be some alternatives? Do the folks that are going to be looking at it the closest object to the way it looks, would they want to see another villas? You know, that type, I see nods, you know? But I don't know what the density would be for that. I certainly understand from y'all's point of view, you've got to make it dense enough so that you can earn a profit. That's what business people do. It's not, "Oh, they just want to make more money." Well, they want to make money on the project, or they wouldn't be doing it. So, you know, I think that's a reasonable statement. I don't know how the rest of the planning commission feels about, you know, just putting this on hold, tabling it for now, but have a meeting of the planning commission or those who wish to attend from the planning commission with the developer. So, you all could come to that with other ideas, more ideas. You can also take with you the things that the speakers have said, the public has said. You've addressed a lot of them, but not really to a lot of satisfaction.
So I guess the question I have, we've talked about density, or cluttered, or whatever you want to call it. Have you looked at, I know you've looked at the numbers. Is there a lower density that you could do and still have this project be viable?
It does not sound to the extent that everybody desires.
Okay. Fair enough. I don't, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know what your pleasure is, but I don't see how we can vote on it this evening, given all the questions that you all have and the changes that we need to make for proffers. So, what is your pleasure to?
Well, if he, this is a question for Mr. Riddick, but if he wishes to proceed as presented, so to speak, he can, because that's what we're going to be tabling and voting on next month, I'm sure. But if he wishes to make changes, how does he go about to do that? Just make whatever changes? Does he re-present, or is it just sort of an amendment?
He would resubmit whatever he wants to change to the planning department, Ms. Clary, and they'd be available for you to consider at your next meeting. and they'd be available for you to consider at your next meeting.
Would we need a next meeting to approve that? Or would it not be able to be looked at prior so that we know that people's concerns are addressed prior to that meeting?
Well, that's kinda what Ms.
That's my suggestion.
That's, I think what she's suggesting is a work session. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is exactly the word. Yes, two words.
That's, that's, that's up to the Planning Commission. I mean, you've done it before, it's up to you.
I, I do agree with, with what Mr. Riddick said, that things have to be in writing. You can't come and tell us you're going to do something and, and just say you're gonna do it because that's a he should, you know, he says, she says. And, and it just doesn't wash. We have to have this all written down so that we can say, all right, this is what he's gonna do. Either we can live with it or we can't. But the proffers have to be spelled out. I would like to know about this exterior maintenance. I would like to know about builders and stuff like that. I don't know where we go. I, I, I'm at a loss right now. I'm very confused.
Would you all like to entertain a work session for this?
I mean, I think it would be appropriate to, for him to think about it and to come back with answers or no answers, depending on how he feels, but, but.
He has no obligation to change anything.
Correct, correct, I get that.
But, but he has an opportunity to change things based on what he's heard.
Correct.
So.
So maybe he might like a work session.
Yeah. Do you agree with a work session?
I, I would. I'd like to discuss it with my partner and see actually how he wants to proceed at this point because the feedback that I'm getting is it seems like most of the members are looking for a substantial reduction in density, which makes the project financially unfeasible. So I, I, I kinda, I guess I, we need, I need to brainstorm with my partner and see what we need to fall back to.
And then closing those, those loops.
Sorry, but, but if.
And proffers with, you know, the, the details that were requested this evening. We could just make sure those mesh.
Sure.
In the documents.
And, and if that's where we're going, it would be extremely helpful to be able to have some coordination with you guys prior to, you know, burning up another four hours of some of y'all's night.
I agree.
Next time, uh, just for it to come up short again and, and have to go through the process again a month later.
Chairwoman Hilli Glass, come in.
Yes, Mr. Brown, sir.
I'm not in favor of a work session, and I don't wanna keep contemplating this. We need to take action. That, that's my position. We need to take action. And I'm willing to make a motion, if nobody seconds it, that's fine. But I'm willing to make a motion on this application that we forward this to Town Council as presented with a negative recommendation. That's my motion.
Have a motion. Did there say?
I'd like to make an alternate motion that we table any decision tonight and that we get together for a work session so that you can talk with us and get some feedback on information that you can bring back to us. You know you've gotta firm up the proffers and, and the language for the HOA and all of that. You know that. But the nebulous stuff, you know, the, the clutteredness of what you're proposing, there's got to be another product out there. And perhaps there's something that is much, going to be much more desirable or pleasing to the community. And I think that you need, I, I personally feel you should have the opportunity to talk with us in a work session about it.
I appreciate that, yes. This, this is the third product that we've proposed here. Thank you.
And I understand. So my motion is we table it and schedule a work session.
The only problem I have with that, Gigi, is he is gonna talk to his partner and decide whether he even wants to go farther and whether they want a work session. So there's no reason for us to have a work session if we don't have anything to talk about.
He can always, if he, if he makes that decision, that makes the need for a work session.
Go away.
Go away.
All right.
I understand.
We wouldn't be setting a, a date tonight for a work session, would we?
That's not, that's not fair. I mean, essentially, you, you're taking an action, you're, you're, with the motion to defer action until the next meeting of the, defer, further consideration, until, because you're not promising action, but you're further consideration at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission with the caveat that you're willing to entertain a work session at a date that's mutually convenient to the parties.
I can draw with that.
Isn't that what you're saying, Ms. Smith?
That is exactly, that is exactly what she said.
Okay, then I'll second that one.
An emotion and a second, thank God. That we defer action tonight with the opportunity for a work session if desired by the applicant and subsequent decision related to me. Does that?
Yes.
Does that capture everybody? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? I vote any pose.
No.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
Do you wanna move nine before eight, just so you can get out of here?
What's that? Oh, yeah. Just say that clearly to you, Tim. We've had a request to bump up item number nine, final plat for Mallory Point, and handle that before our next public hearing if there's no objections. Ms. Clary, you have a staff report on this before?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking final plat approval for the dedication of approximately 17.458 acres. This would be of parcel B from parcel A, which is 2301008. In addition, there is also a 25-foot strip of land that will be dedicated to the town for right-of-way purposes. We do recommend approval as submitted, provided that the Town Council does accept this property for the dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any, anyone here from the, I would kinda wish to speak. Sorry.
Hey, good evening. My name is Vince Napolitano. Address is 1492 South Independence Boulevard, Virginia Beach, Virginia. And I will keep my comments brief, as I know it's been a long night. This is essentially a parcel that's just north of Phase F. That's gonna be the final phase of Mallory Point. It's a, it's a ways away. We're, we're, as you can tell, we're in Phase A right now, and that's, hopefully, we'll be finishing up there first of the year. And just now being able to bring, uh, homes, to be able to start homes out there. This parcel, if you've looked at what's in your packet, it is what has essentially been deemed as open space for the community. And what we've done is, i- i- it's a weird parcel because the way the Scott Farm lays out, there's a natural buffer between what is this open space, this big chunk that's north of Phase F, where that was just gonna be an open field essentially for the residents. There, there was nothing proffered as far as there's a park going in there. It was just gonna be a field. So we got to a point where we thought, is there another use for this that can be better than just something that the residents have to worry about keeping up with? So that is when we reached out to the town and said, hey, there's an opportunity here where you've got five, five acres. It's 17 acres, but you've got the RPA buffer, if you look in here, where it's unusable. It's, it's, it's wetland, it's, it's, it's woodland. You can't do anything with it. But there are five acres of uplands where there's an opportunity for the town to be able to use that in the future, whether it's a, a fire station or, or some kind of other public, uh, way to utilize it to where it's not just our residents that can take advantage of it, but it's the town of Smithfield. So we decided to, at this time, where we don't have any residents that are currently living there, where we, we don't have the HOA, where you've gotta have a vote of everybody in Mallory Point to be able to dedicate land to you guys, that we would come at this point and say, hey, there's an opportunity. If you all wanna take advantage of it, that's something that we, we would be willing to do. If not, we will keep it as open space for, for Mallory Point. So any questions at all, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
I have one. Uh, we've, we've, I've heard this, discussion about this before. Have you gotten positive feedback from the town?
Yes, we have. In fact, we talked with the city manager and a couple of members of Town Council, I do believe. And it's all been positive feedback that this could be a future asset for the town.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
All this is is plat approval, it's not a commitment that the town will take. That's gonna be a decision from the town council.
Okay.
Now make a motion that we send a, a positive recommendation and prove it as submitted, provided that the Town Council accepts the dedication.
This would be the Planning Commission's approval of the final plat.
And, and it shouldn't be conditional, it's, it's just approval of the plat. That's all, that's all you really needed it. Because it's up to the town councils to whether they accept it or not.
Okay.
So is your motion to approve the plat, Charles?
Yes, approve the plat as submitted.
Second.
Mr. Davidson is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody? All right, thank you very much. So we're going back to item number eight. Hey, look, it's another public hearing, 'cause the others just weren't enough. Do we have a staff report, Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a site plan amendment. This is for an approximate 30 by 32-foot addition. The applicant is also seeking a special use permit under Article 3 IC 30 for a waiver of parking and loading. This is for relief for Article 8, which requires one space per 200 square feet of gross floor area. With the addition, the applicant is required to have a minimum of 36 parking spaces and currently has 27 existing spaces. Finally, entrance corridor overlay review and approval for the materials of the addition. It will match the existing building materials, including the shingles and brick. An SUP is a recommendation to Town Council, and Planning Commission does decide on the ECO and the site plan amendment. We do recommend that the ECO and site plan approval is contingent on the applicant obtaining a zoning permit and fee payment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Is there anybody from the applicant who'd like to speak? Say your name and address for the record, please. Al, let me open the public hearing. This is a public hearing, I mean, it is open, we have no speakers. And we'll give anybody, is there anybody else here who would like the chance to speak before Dr. Pope gives his lovely rendition of facts? No speakers, going once, going twice. All right, Dr. Pope, you're up.
So this came about because our building's not big enough, and this is, so we run two businesses, which is one of the questions Mr. Brian has. We have our medical spot in the front, and then our, my wife has opened up an aesthetics division in the back, and that business is taken off for her. She doesn't have enough space, physical space, to operate that business. And so this is strictly about a 975-square-foot addition, just to give her space. We need an office manager. She doesn't have a waiting room. Our clients wait in the hallway currently, you know, for their appointments and stuff in the back part of the building, separate from the front office waiting room. So this is strictly to give her a more formal waiting room, instead of people just waiting in our hallway. This gives her an office manager spot. This gives her one more treatment room because her and her partner currently only have one treatment room to treat. They can't even be in the building at the same time to treat, so that gives her an additional space. We have a storage room that we're asking for. We used to have a massage, that's no longer there, but we still have a massage room as it's on there. So this is strictly just more space for us. We're actually not entertaining having any extra employees or anything of that nature. It's really just, we need physical, more physical space. And that's really what it comes down to for it. So, yeah, I, I think our brick is still in production. Our roof is black or charcoal. I don't think there's gonna be any issues matching with the current stuff is with our building. And that's there. So that's really all this addition's about.
Great, thank you, Dr. Pope. Questions for the applicant? Nothing left? Do you just have nothing left? What?
I got one for him.
Okay.
So parking waiver? You got enough parking? I know one of the things we talk about in our guidelines, especially in what we're just looking at now as far as our ECO guidelines and stuff. If we can keep green space and make parking lot deals, it's all for it. Do you have any parking arrangements with any of the?
We have, we have a verbal agreement with CBS that allows our employees to park on their back row of their spot, spot closest to Wendy's. And so they haven't given us grief over that for the last 15 years. And so they still allow us to park there. They just did a parking lot renovation at their place, and we parked along, I don't know, Vincent's Crossing, I guess, is the road that goes through there. So we were able to park on the street for that. But currently, as far as employees, as long as our nurses and those support staffs park over there, we don't have any issues with support. We're not anticipating that more clients are coming through. It's just, we just need the space.
Other questions for the applicant? Chairwoman, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the project as presented.
It would be a favorable recommendation to Town Council and then a, a Planning Commission approval of the ECO and the site plan amendment.
Thank you.
Second.
We get on that. Should we close the public hearing first?
No. We still need it, okay?
Oh, okay. I forget. I'm, I'm medicated and malnourished. And, and a court low. We have a motion as second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, if I could, Dr. Pope abstained, you did not participate.
Of course. You would never do such a thing. All right, move right along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pope. Can't wait for that extra space. We have two sets of minutes to tackle tonight, September and October.
The Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, in all these pages, I found one mistake. And so I recommend the, and it's not even a mistake, it's just she didn't understand the word. So I recommend the minutes be approved as revised and corrected from both sides.
So move it.
Move it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion as second for, to approve the, the minutes of the September 10th and October 8th meeting of the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
And you opposed? Very good. Any further business? We are adjourned. Thank you for your time and attention, ladies and gentlemen.